Good evening, welcome to the August 4th Board of Selectmen's Meeting. This meeting is being audio and video recorded and will be shown on local access television. If you'd please stand and join me in the Pledge to the Flag.
My pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the first thing we have on the agenda is approving the May 5th meeting minutes.
So moved, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And accept for review the meeting minutes of May 19th and June 2nd.
For review, so moved, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 We have three vacation carryover requests, one for John Donahue, the principal assessor. That one is 10 days. Gloria Hopkins, I believe, is five days, and Lorna is five days.
Oh, correct.
Is there a motion to?
It's the 10, 5, and 5.
So moved, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, the Fire Department is looking to dispose of an aluminum boat and trailer. This trailer's, this boat is from around the 1950s, has since acquired a Zodiac-style boat that was donated to the department. Is there a motion to declare the boat and trailer as surplus?
So moved, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The Fire Chief has put together proposed rate increases. As far as we know, these rates haven't been adjusted in a couple decades. He also did a comparison to other towns. The $50, the increase to $50 will still be in range or below comparable towns.
I'd make a motion to approve the new rates, new fees.
I would second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, and the Building Inspector has also put together a proposal. He also did a comparison to other towns and believes that they are below or in range. These also haven't been increased, although you could say that the ones that are per thousand have kind of indirectly been increased because as construction costs increase, the fee would increase with it. There's a number of increases here.
Are these in line with other towns?
Yes, he did a study and they are in line. Are there, David, do you have it, or do you know if, I'm assuming all are below or in range, none are above?
They were still basically below. I didn't include in the packet because it's a really cumbersome packet. To Mike White's credit, he did a really good job. He collected all the analysis on literally about two dozen towns, both peer communities and local communities. We would still be low, similar to the fire permit fees. It looks like these have not been adjusted in decades. So we're looking to bring them closer to what the market rate is, but it's still actually lower than comparable towns.
Wow, I can't believe we were so low. We just doubled the fees on the fire permits. These are going to go up 20 to 40%?
They were on a per thousand basis for the.
So those have been increasing anyway. I mean, if it's in line.
And the other concern is the Building Department really should pay for itself, which it doesn't. So this would get us to the department being able to pay for itself through fees.
Do we have a proposal as to how much the income versus expenses would be?
I don't know what their budget is. So a typical year, I think, is around $150,000 in permit fees. This would increase it by around 30% probably. So that's another 45. That would get us to almost $200,000 in fees, although this past year was more than $200,000. But I think an out-of-the-ordinary year. David, do you know what the budget is for the department?
I don't know off the top of my head, but I'm doing the math. I'm going to say between 2 and 2 and 1/4 because it's his department, it's the Building Department, plus there's two other smaller ones, which is gas and plumbing. So I'd say about 2 and 1/4 with all of them all told. The chairman is entirely correct. This past year, our total fees that we received was $218,000, but the previous five years, we averaged between $140 and $150. So there was a spike. Again, Mike's done a nice job. It's been busy with COVID because people have been home to do more projects. However, there's always some carryover as well. Sometimes they don't always exactly align up in the fiscal year. You can do 98% of your project in one year, close it on July 3rd, and then it falls to the following year. But in any event, again, I think we're just looking to try to bring this into market rate. You know, we did the analysis earlier, a $300,000 home or a $400,000 home, the difference on the residential permits, about $120 the difference from one permit to the other. If developers doing a $400,000 home, $120, it doesn't stop that person from building the home. So, you know, it's, again, we're just trying to be consistent with what the market rate is. And although you're entirely right, Mary, that if you want to say on average that the increase is 30%, if these have not been increased in at least 30 years, that'd be like if we did 1% a year, nobody would complain, right? Which is, we just haven't adjusted them and we need to adjust them.
Which we should be doing.
Yeah, we really should.
Or we should be doing it every other year or so.
Correct. I mean, we really should be more consistent on this.
So I'll make a motion to approve the Building Department permit fees?
And I would, I'm so sorry, I would just ask, also it'd be Building, gas and plumbing and wiring, please.
Okay. So the motion would be for Building Department permit fees, gas and wiring fees as well.
That is correct.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, the Police Chief is asking for authorization to participate in a documentary. This will not be paid for. When he was a detective, he was part of an investigation that I think led him to Florida. And they're looking to do, someone's looking to do a documentary on it. He got, he talked to Ethics and they asked that he get the board's approval. Is there a motion to authorize the Police Chief to participate in this documentary?
So my understanding is this is something he's not doing during business time. He's doing it outside of that, and he's already vetted it through Ethics. And I think Vic has historically made wise decisions and presents us very professionally. So I would make a motion to authorize the Police Chief to participate in the documentary.
Yeah, I just want to be clear. I do not know if it's going to be while he's on shift or not on shift.
Okay.
Because they have not put together a schedule yet.
Okay.
So it may very well be while he's off shift, but I honestly don't know the answer to that.
Okay. Well, again, I go back to the fact that he is the utmost professional and I'm sure he would never let it get in the way of his business activities. And, I mean, a lot of these documentaries are great learning experiences for the public. You know, there are almost like mini-safety courses in a lot of ways when you see what's happened in the past and can avoid it in the future. So I would, again, make the same motion.
Okay, is there a second?
Yeah, I think this is so interesting and it's commendable that he was involved in a situation where he could, you know, be part of this documentary and knowing he's the utmost professional, I trust him to make the right time commitments to still manage his position, which I'm sure will not be an issue. So I second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we have a few end-of-year transfers. We have $44,300 to the Public Works. This was primarily due to tree work. Snow and ice, we have every year, that's just over $209,000. Streetlights, $16,000. I think we've had this for a few years. I think we did increase this budget this year, though.
We did.
And solid waste disposal, we kind of expected this, almost $19,000. So a total of $288,871. Is there a motion to approve?
And if you could do me a favor, because I just recognize that there's an error, that $288,871 is coming out of benefits. So if you could just make the motion to be $288,871 from benefits to cover that, I apologize, it's an error on the form.
Okay, I'll make a motion for the end-of-year transfer for $288,871 from the benefits budget to the four budgets listed.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, the town clerk has submitted a list of appointments for election workers. Is there a motion to approve that list?
I'll make a motion to approve the list of election workers.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And Howard Hayward has submitted his resignation from the Open Space and Recreation Committee. Is there a motion to accept that resignation with a letter of thanks?
Make a motion to accept with a letter of thanks.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. And the appointment of Sergeant Russell Reagan as lockup keeper. The Police Chief has submitted this request. He would like this position to now be held by a sergeant who has more administrative time to be in the station doing this work.
Make a motion to appoint Sergeant Russ Reagan as lockup keeper?
I just question what that is. Do any of you know what that means? Is that literally just locking up keys?
No, no, lockup is the cells.
Oh, oh, gotcha. Okay, makes a lot more sense now.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So appoint a representative to the Vic Senior Award. So that would be the incoming chair, Mary?
That is correct.
Yeah.
Okay, is there, so.
What does that mean?
I'll make, so when the committee gets ready to vet who would have received the award at town meeting, you'd be part of that, involved in that.
Nice, okay, cool.
So I'll make a motion for Mary to be appointed to the Victor Flaherty Senior Civic Award Committee.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And discussion on the 12th Annual Appreciation Day.
I thought the ice cream was a big hit, the ice cream truck.
I was surprised when you guys said that the school isn't normally invited, but last year everybody was. Should we, shouldn't we invite everybody?
So I guess the reason we didn't was because it doubles the size, roughly. And I know that, in the past Patty had done something. I'm assuming Mark still does something as well for.
Oh, do they do something separate?
They do.
Yeah.
I didn't realize that.
So currently it is scheduled for September 24th, which is a Friday. So the question is, is that in years past, we had done something at the Council on Aging, but I do think that Denise is entirely correct. I think the ice cream thing went really well. So it's really a matter of whatever it is that you want to do. We don't have to make a decision tonight, but we figure we put on the agenda and, because before, our next meeting's actually in September. So, you know, just put on there, but if you like the idea with the ice cream truck, I would have to call and book it.
We were fortunate, last year we had a beautiful day, too. It felt like a July day.
I liked the ice cream truck, that's another thing. It's easier for us.
Was there anything besides ice cream, just so it was something different? You know, there's so many food trucks now.
I don't know, you know, I'm thinking like the fried dough and stuff like that, but I don't know how popular something like that would be to everyone.
That's true. Everybody likes ice cream. Who doesn't like ice cream?
And they had a, they had a great variety, too. They did a great job.
I'm fine with the ice cream truck.
Right. So I'll make a, do we need a, we don't need a motion, do we?
As long as you guys are comfortable and you're providing me the guidance of what you want to do, we'll make the call, we'll book it.
Okay. And probably should mention, we pay for that ourselves, out of our own pockets, as appreciation for the town employees.
Yep, our number one asset.
Great, how about comment period? Anyone have anything?
I did attend a meeting I wanted to tell you guys about. And when we were talking about the transfer for streetlights, that's what reminded me of it. I was on a road audit meeting with OCPC yesterday and Michelle Dubois was on there. And the members, some of the members of the DPW were also on there. It was a road audit at West Street and Manly Street, and they were talking about some of the needs of that area. And they really got to talking about the LED lights for the, and Michelle was talking about helping us out. And she was going to work with the DPW about finding, she was saying National Grid sponsors some of these and covers the cost, so.
We had started.
So we took a vote on that. Alden brought it up almost a year ago, or over, no, it would have been over a year ago.
Yeah, it had to be over a year ago.
So I know he had contacted National Grid back then, and I know David talked to someone at National Grid. I don't know.
I did. So, so right as COVID hit, that vote had been taken and we, I contacted National Grid. They sent me a proposal. There is some costs from the town. We have to buy certain, like, there's different programs we have to select. I was supposed to meet with the rep from National Grid. COVID hit, they weren't coming out in the field. I've actually spoken to members of the DPW about it, and so it's something that we're going to look to revitalize. Because I like the idea. If we can long-term save money, I think that's a good idea, and they're more effective. You know, they're better lights.
They're brighter as well. They were saying it would help with the safety.
Brighter and more efficient.
It's all about what the ultimate, because there are different plans. What they really want us to do is they really want us to buy the lights and own the lights. And that's not, and we did that when I was in a different town, and that did not come out to be very, that's not the way you want, you buy all of them upfront for no cost. So it sounds fantastic. And then they will pay certain costs, and you have to pay certain costs. But if you have, I think we have about 700 poles in town with lights, every single time that the light has to be changed, you then have to pay for it. So there's different programs and I have to really look at the numbers. I could tell you in the other town that we're in, we wish we hadn't done it that way. So that's why we would, but there are different, there's different ways to do it. I just have to meet with National Grid, better understand it, because at this point, I don't know it well enough to advise you.
Okay. All right, Town Administrator's Report.
So real quickly, we have been using a company for electrical aggregation now going on five years. The last contract we did was a three-year contract, which ends this November. What I did was, excuse me one second. Oh, I just wanted to show you, this is just one graph, but there's five graphs. And what I want to show you is, is that electricity at the wholesale level continues to move upward. In fact, quite frankly, since some decisions have been made back in February and March, you could see that energy has almost gone parabolic in the way that it's going up in price. And what I mean by that is there have been some decisions made that have restricted the ability to transport either energy or to be able to permit new energy. And obviously, we all know how supply and demand works. So our contract expires in November. The expectation is, is that the National Grid rack rate will go up to what it is now. And we think we still have an opportunity to try to save our residents some money. As an example, I want to show you in real-world numbers how it works. National Grid goes out to bid.
Excuse me, thank you.
They go out to bid twice a year, once in March, once in September. And they actually advertise the date they're going to go out to bid, which seems kind of silly, because the people know that when they go to sell to the biggest supplier of energy in the Northeast, the day that they're actually going to put in for their bid. It's kind of weird. The reason I bring it up is because you could see the last time they went out in March, that the actual rate in town that you could get without going out to bid was cheaper. But once National Grid bids it, it always goes higher because in essence, that becomes the floor. National Grid being the largest supplier of it, everybody else then falls in line. So we always want to try to buy, if we're going to procure energy on an advocated basis, we always want to try to procure energy before National Grid actually goes out to bid. So the way it works this year is, is that they are going to go out to bid on September 8th, and your next meeting is on September 1st. I have a meeting with our, with Colonial Power Group, where I'll be online as they're going through the power numbers. And we're going to find out what they call indicative pricing, which means what would be our pricing if we were to sign up for it. So I would like to bring that number to you on September 1st. And if that number is below what we believe the rate is going to be, then I'm going to ask you as to whether or not we can aggregate it again. If it's not, then I would ask you not to. This past year, we did, we did three years. But as you could see, as energy is really spiking, and we all know that we're in an inflationary environment right now, it may not be wise to go three years. It may be wise to only do, say, 12 months. But again, I won't know that information until then. So there's no decision today. I was just letting you know that next meeting, I'll be bringing it to your attention. I would, I did put together this grid here, oops, I'm sorry. And you will see on the left-hand side, it's a little bit, but residents did over, since we have signed up for it, if you want to just move.
Was this the postcard thing that went out to everybody a few years ago?
Correct. So you could see that the residents did save $368,000, $369,000 over the course of those years. Surprisingly, the commercial customer actually spent a little bit more. And yet, it's because they can get, when National Grid sells energy, they don't just sell it based on a rate, they also sell it based on a time. And residential customers, for the most part, use it at peak times. Usually you use it in the morning and you use it in the afternoon. Businesses use it during non-peak hours, which is during the day. So they actually get a lower rate directly from National Grid. So if they don't want to sign up, they don't have to. But in any event, our residents did get, I mean, that's substantial savings in less than four years of almost $100,000 per year. So I'll bring it to you at that time. Next on the agenda is a video I want to show you. Lorna did a nice job to put up here. I really wanted to give Ben credit. He did a fantastic job on this. I think this is everything as to what the town is all about, both the fact that he and the Cable Committee do such a nice job trying to promote the town. And so I just placed it on here, just in case you hadn't seen it, so you could see it and, you know, see how good of a job they did. Ben even stars in it as he walks through. So go ahead.
The West Bridgewater Memorial Tree and Bench Program allows friends and relatives to provide a unique dedication to loved ones. Your generous donation of a tree or bench will help beautify our community, create a sense of ownership, and provide a meaningful amenity that thousands of users will enjoy and appreciate for years to come. You are encouraged to take advantage of this opportunity to remember a loved one or a special occasion with a lasting tribute. The memorial program is currently taking donations to add park benches, picnic tables, and trees to enhance the new pedestrian pavilion at the War Memorial Park located along River Street. Available memorial donations: memorial tree, $400. A tree will be selected for the area and planted at the proper season. Trees may be donated at any time of the year, but planting will be done at the direction of the tree warden. A memorial plaque will be installed at the base of the tree. Memorial table, $1100. A freestanding picnic table made of premier polystyrene has benches centered on each side to allow wheelchair access at either end. A 4x6-inch memorial plaque with your inscription will be attached to the table. Memorial bench, 2100 to 2400 installed. These benches are made of PVC-coated diamond-shaped extended metal and installed on permanent cement pads. A 4x6-inch memorial plaque with your inscription will be attached to the backrest of either a six- or eight-foot park bench. The town will make every effort to maintain trees, benches, and tables, but will not be responsible for acts of nature, survivability of trees, damage, or vandalism. The town may repair, replace, or relocate memorial trees, benches, or tables at its sole discretion, but will not be required to do so. Non-parishable items such as photos, plastic flowers, and beads are not permitted and will be removed. If you are interested and would like more information on the West Bridgewater Memorial Tree and Bench Program, please contact West Bridgewater Tree Warden Chris Anatelli at c-anatelli@westbridgewater.com.
So I thought it was a nice video, thought it would be nice for you to see it. In addition to that, the DPW Department really did do a nice job. The new sidewalk is in down at River Street, and so it'll be our opportunity to either plant more trees or put more, more tables and chairs and benches up there. And the last thing on the agenda is just discussion technology upgrade. So, you know, again, the Cable Committee and Ben have done a nice job. They have outfitted here. We've done upgrades through the years, and we're looking to potentially do another upgrade. Anthony and I had a brief conversation with Ben about a month ago about potentially doing something with microphones in the room. So Ben sent me this email. We went back and forth, but I only put the initial email. And, you know, he makes some suggestions and some recommendations, but in the end, it's really your decision, not mine. So I placed it on the agenda. Ben has some concerns, because we had talked about putting additional monitor, so Ben had some concerns on that. So I thought it'd be wise, where he was here, if he could speak to it, let you know what he's thinking, get an idea of what you're thinking. The last thing is, is that I should be able to use some COVID money for this. So if they don't have all the money that they can use, they have some money and they can't do it all, then I think that I can use some COVID money. If, if they have the money, great. The money that they receive is through the Comcast, the reimbursement from Comcast program for infrastructure upgrades. But Ben, I'll let you talk, if that's okay, if that's okay with the board.
Yep, no problem. Thank you, David. And just to backtrack, I'm not sure, the Cable Committee did approve on our June meeting for the town hall upgrades, with a little wig of room if there was anything needed to be added in. However, I'm not sure if what we talked about, was that, what I talked about in my previous email was actually added in, because our vendor from Access AV is on vacation as well. So, but overall, Anthony and David had come to me asking about, with the ever-increase of hybrid meetings and people coming in and working, coming in remotely, including some sort of webcam to be, webcam and monitor to be included in the town hall room, so that anybody could, cannot be here present, could still remotely participate. So there was some back and forth between what we were looking at, whether it could be wall-mounted TV monitor, whether it could be on cart, included with a projector possibly. I strongly recommend it being on a cart. Unfortunately, like I said, the vendor was not here, so I couldn't give exact dimensions or even if that product was included in our full upgrade list. And the reason I would like to, or the reason I would recommend going with a cart, there's mobility to move it from different areas of the room, including in the wintertime when FinCom meets, you'll be able to move it to one area. If a selectman wouldn't be able to attend the meeting, you could possibly add it where they're sitting. The webcam would probably be attached to the monitor, and the monitor would be attached to, you know, some sort of cart. Storage would probably be the biggest issue. And oh yeah, other boards and committees could possibly also use it as well, if it's not being used by the selectmen, say downstairs, in one of those rooms. But like I said, I think the biggest issue would be, for a cart, would be storage. I don't expect it to be any bigger than this monitor up here, which is about 24, no bigger than 27. I could assume that maybe it could be stored in maybe the staff break room, one of the selectmen admin assistance rooms, possibly even in the corner back there. The other options were possibly mounting it on one of the walls in the selectmen room. I wasn't too in favor of that, just because like I said, rooms can sometimes be rearranged if we were like, maybe having a meeting with FinCom. And I just don't see any real area in the back. It might be hit by the door. If it's on the side, it might be hit by a person. I know I have a monitor, I have a TV in my bedroom that I kind of walk by in my bed and I sometimes bump into it. So you wouldn't want it to get bumped into or possibly anything like that. And I just think possibly having it be able to be mobile would probably be the best solution. But that's just my recommendation. Like I said, the vendor is on vacation this week, so I don't know if it was included in the list. They are looking to upgrade our AV equipment in the town hall for the end of September. So that's about it from my end. If you have any questions, I'd be able to pass it on to them. Like I said, the vendors, Access AV, they're the ones who originally did this back in the early 2010s. the early 2010s. They did a great job, and I think they'll do another great, excellent job operating our equipment.
Would it be okay to have a monitor on a cart going up and down the stairs? You said if other.
Oh, we have an elevator.
Oh, that's true. But it would still be moved around quite a bit. Is that safe for the equipment?
Well, we have a very large monitor in our studio that's on cart. I'm expecting it to look somewhat like that. Where it's just basically like, you know, mounted on, and it's pretty easy to move. You would have to obviously attach it to some power, so that we can just need a power cable.
My concern with that is space, though. Like, we don't have that much room in here already. So I know I had told you that I wanted to keep that monitor back there, but, I mean, maybe we just use that one.
You could. It is sort of somewhat far away. Because mostly the webcam would probably just be coming off of, and right now, why the reason it's not on is because it's plugged into my laptop, so that we can stream it to our server. But it could work like that.
Could we use the same setup, but just get a larger monitor?
Larger monitor, like this?
Right. Same spot, we take that one down, we put a larger one there.
You could.
Only because my concern is sometimes, Ben made a really good point, it's on one of the pages, but he, I didn't put it in, but he made a really good point. There are going to be times we may be in executive session that's not going to be tied to cable. For example, maybe we're being advised from our legal counsel, he's not physically here, we can do it through Zoom. You know, the whole world now is going to teleconference more. Maybe we could have a developer that needs to be able to talk, discuss with us, or whatever the case might be. So we don't necessarily want to go through the system. And if we have a larger monitor, sometimes you could have four or five different people. They're going to get really little up on that. So I had said to Ben in the email, I, you know, I purposely didn't say anything to the board as to how I felt, because I didn't want to, as I said, it was your decision. I had told Ben in full disclosure, I was concerned about the car from space, not necessarily storage, because we could store it in here and lock it up and be safe. I'm more concerned about when we real, especially during budget season, this place is pretty packed. And if we have wires, I'm afraid someone's going to trip on it as we move it around. So that was my concern. That's why I like the idea of having a fixed monitor. I know, Anthony, you had talked about having microphones come from the ceiling as well, as opposed to doing these, so I don't know where that stood.
That's in the upgrades.
So you included that?
And every other room that we recorded, including the downstairs, the underground conference room. And that's because a lot of people don't come up to the front, audience members, and it's overall a small room.
So that's a good thing. So it's really just a matter of, I think it would be really good that we would be able to use the monitor and do it in a way that Lorna would be able to access it. So that way, in executive session, again, town council's advising us, and he or she is not physically with us, but we could still converse with them. I think that's a good idea.
Makes sense.
Yeah, so then the webcam would mount on that wall as well?
Yes, mostly would mount right on top.
Facing us, I mean, I think that could still work for FinCom. Not all of them might not have a great view of the TV, but I don't think there's any way that they could, because they're in a circle.
Right.
I agree. It could definitely work that way, because it would be facing towards the FinCom.
Yeah.
I think, David, you're right, it would definitely need to be increased in size a little bit, and then we could repurpose this back at our studio for one thing or the other. Yeah, because I just don't think any other room, any other area, possibly on the side, but like I said, someone might bump it, door might hit it on that side. I think that would work.
Ben, could you put it on a swivel?
Swivel like this?
Yeah.
Swivel? Yes, that's a possibility.
You know, one that would extend out and swivel?
It wouldn't go that, it wouldn't be able to go that far, though. Usually they only go on a couple inches.
Yeah.
Or to the left or right.
I was thinking, get it a little bit out from the wall, and a little swivel might help with, help with some of the visibility.
Yeah, they're not expensive. They're like forty, fifty dollars. And, but you're right, it's just an arm.
Yeah. I think the only downside would be any, audience members would have to turn their neck if this was maybe a presentation.
Right.
Something during open session, but.
Yeah.
I guess, I'm just throwing this out there, maybe I'm entirely wrong, but is it possible that we could do it through the projector at times, so that we switch it, you know, like almost doing different inputs on TV? You switch it from there to here. So during a public meeting, like right now, if we wanted to put on that screen and interact, is, is it easy enough to toggle back and forth?
Would you want to take it from there and then put it back there, and then back to the monitor, or just?
I'm just throwing it out there, I don't know if.
Plus, I don't know where we would set up that. It's definitely possible. I don't know completely how we would connect, say, the webcam, but where would we put that? At least up here on the wall, it's kind of covering the whole room. I definitely, I definitely also gave the option of a projector as well. My just one hesitation was, like I said, where would we put the webcam?
But if we kept the webcam on top of the TV?
Okay.
And then we cabled it to the TV, and I don't know if you cable it also over to a projector, maybe across the ceiling. And then like, you know, on TV, when you, you can, you switch over on your source, you're playing a video game, and you go to Netflix or whatever, we would just toggle. And we'd say, okay, let's have the webcam shoot to that monitor, let's have the webcam switch to this. Maybe it's not possible, I'm just throwing it out there.
It would be possible. Yeah, because we do, I mean, you're right, yeah, we could just, most projectors can have some, some form of a video and also interconnection. I will definitely forward that to our.
Well, I want to make sure you guys, as I said, it's your room.
I don't care as much about being able to toggle. I mean, I think just put it on the wall back there with the webcam facing this direction. That's fine.
Okay, so back wall.
Bigger screen. Yeah.
Be able to toggle. Okay. All right, we'll forward that along, and then I can get back to you, David, and the board.
Okay.
I guess, no one may well have an update by, I'll definitely make sure to have an update by September first.
Right.
Right, thank you, Ben.
Thanks, Ben.
Okay, that is everything on the agenda. I would entertain a motion to enter into executive session, not to return to open session, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining, specifically the clerical union, to discuss strategy and preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, specifically the GIS administrator, with respect to litigation, specifically to potential litigation to unemployment claim, and with respect to ongoing litigation, specifically the national opioid lawsuit. Since in my opinion as chair, strategizing in open session would have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the town. Is there a motion?
So moved?
Second.
All in favor? Roll call vote.
Raise, yes.
Anderson, yes?
Canan, yes. We're now in executive session. All right.